Call the meeting to order. Road call, please.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Neiman? Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Mayor Welsh?
Here. Would you all stand for the opening prayer pledge of allegiance, please?
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, as we gather here to work towards a common goal, we ask your presence to guide and direct our decisions. We know your will is good for all members of our community. We also pray for our police and fire department and our city workers in for the safety and the work they do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, there is an ordinance for your consideration. Um, make sure we have a copy on your desk there to authorize the city to go into interlocal agreement of three.
Is that number four under new business?
Yes.
Okay. I so move that we add item number four, an ordinance for, uh, an ordinance to enter an interlocal agreement.
Uh, second.
I have an addition of an ordinance authorizing the city of Arkans City to enter into an interlocal agreement. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing sign. This will be entered under new business number four. Okay. Do I approve of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to the, to approve the agenda with the additions.
I'll second it.
Go start it then.
I have a motion to approve the agenda in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign to decline. Motion's carrying. Have any awards or proclamations? None?
Rice Kelly.
Well, they're recognized. Um, I'm going to go with Rice Kelly first. Rice, uh, Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, among my many job duties, I have the privilege of being a member of the steering committee for Rice Kelly, which is our community health coalition that is countywide. And for the last three years, we have been working to disperse as much money as possible. And I'm proud to say that as of July, we were able to secure the full $400,000 in extra grants uh, into the county, as well as the $100,000 grant that we had at the beginning. So $500,000 has directly flowed into Cali County as part of the impact of the Pathways to a Healthy Kansas Grant Program, which is all money from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas. And Rice basically kind of put together the whole application and has been administering that program. And that's what I've been working with for the last three years. And so the last of that money is what we're bringing tonight to you to, uh, we want to take a photo op of our big check so we can put it on social media. Um, but the city was a recipient of three different grants here at the last portion of the grant period. We got $25,000, which we need to spend by December 15th on a technical consultant for our master transportation plan. And we're working on that right now. Um, we're drafting a request for proposals that we'll send out to qualified firms throughout the state. So we'll be bringing that back to you probably in late November. We also received $15,168.59. We have already spent every cent of that and a little extra. Um, and we've purchased 22 new LED light poles that will be installed at Poplar Walking Trail. So that will allow people to use that trail even after sunset, which is pretty early on that trail because of the way the dike runs. So, uh, we're really excited about that. You know, that continues the enhancements we've had with the workout stations and such. And then the police department was also the recipient of a $10,000 grant. They already took their photo across the street, but Chief Ward welcomed the, the end this one as well. Um, and they're using that to, uh, put a nutrition program in place for their personnel. So, all told, we were able to get over $55,000 directly into our organization and several more thousands of dollars here in our Kansas City. So unless you have any questions, I was gonna welcome our members that are here tonight for the photo and we'll get set up. You guys wanna go ahead and come in? Jody Pugh is here with the Health Department. She's our new, um, grant coordinator for Pathways Phase Two, which will be the new four-year program that we're entering into right now. And we also have fellow steering committee members, Mandy Fawnenstiel and Dr. Dennis Riddle. And I'm just gonna put out a plug. My term is running up in December. So if any of you are interested or you know anyone else who might be interested, I'm, I'm looking for someone to replace me. But I'm, I know we'll have good representation going forward with these two here representing Ark City. And Jody's gonna do a great job running things, so.
We sure like you.
I'll still be involved. I'll be working on the trails and stuff, but I need to step back a little bit.
I keep trying.
We'll get some time to work on you.
Okay, you work and I'll work and we'll see what we can make work out.
We'll make it happen.
Alright, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind coming down.
Always like to joke, smile behind the mask.
That's what I was thinking.
There we go. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, it is.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, yeah, thanks.
Right, got us excited. I have a visitor. Harrison Taylor.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm coming down here speaking to you every meeting, not from an adversarial approach, but trying to, uh, work together. There's a lot of great things, uh, happening in our city. And I'm excited about, you know, the hike bike trail and the improvement at, uh, Paris Park. Uh, I think those are great. And, uh, I'm seeing a weakness that I'm just trying to correct. So I hope you, I hope you look at it as a positive thing. The, the police have been just amazingly cooperative, really helpful. Um, I went to the, uh, safety meeting and presented my story. And then I had a long talk with, uh, Eric Burr. Is it Captain Burr now? Yeah, Captain Burr. And we had a great talk. And, uh, also Officer, um, Jeremy, can't think of his last name. But Officer Jeremy, um, came to my home and, uh, I invited him in. We had a long talk also about the situation, very positive. And he also spent, uh, some time with my neighbor across the street. And he, my neighbor got a chance to vent his frustrations also. I've noticed more patrols on the street, um, every day. I've noticed they also put out the trailer, the speed trailer. And they've had a couple of decoys out there. And it's, it, it has had an impact temporarily. Now, the speed trailer gives us some information and doesn't give us other information. Um, it tells us about, somewhat about the speeds from eight in the morning till about five at night. But if you're like me, when you see that trailer, you're gonna slow down. And I always see the trailer before it picks up my speed, always, okay? So I'm guessing that a lot of cars slowed down when they saw that trailer and went through there a little bit slower than they normally would. I, I'm just guessing that, from what I saw sitting out there, um, it, that seemed to be what I was noticing. But still, it was a great gesture. It gave us some, uh, input on the volume of traffic. And, uh, at that particular time, so what we had, 160? 162 was that it? 159, something like that? Which, that's a lot of cars, but let's.
How long a period?
It was eight in the morning till five at night. There's a lot of traffic before eight o'clock in the morning, a lot. And there's a lot of traffic after five. And it goes till nine, 10 o'clock, and it, it's steady. And there's also traffic in the wee hours, which never used to happen. It used to be very, very quiet. So it gives us a snapshot during that time, but it doesn't give us the, the full view of, of that. And also, it was only one direction. It was, the trailer was facing south, so it was picking up the northbound traffic. It seems to me that most of the traffic is southbound. So, I mean, this is a lot of traffic compared to what used to be on my street when I moved in there five years ago. Um, this is still a lot of traffic. And it's, in a 24-hour period, it's just a fraction of the reality. Um, and I, I, I hope that you take that into consideration. The city is very focused on safety, you know, hotspots, and, and that's great. But I really feel that life in our city is more than just patching hotspots. And quality of life, um, is really what I'm, I'm getting at. Safety is a big part of that. I'm trying to be brief here. The stop signs on Third and Fourth Avenue, as you go down from Kansas down to Chestnut, Poplar has, on the avenues, on Third and Fourth, has stop signs, okay? On the avenues, not on the street. Okay, Linden, on Third, has a stop sign. On Fourth, no stop sign. On Pine, there's no stop sign on Third or Fourth. On Birch, there is a stop sign on Third and Fourth. Maple is a through street. Everybody stops for Maple. Cedar, the corner I live on, there's a, a stop sign on Third and Fourth. Vine, there's no stop sign on Third or Fourth. On Spruce, there's no stop sign on Third or Fourth. And Walnut, there's no stop sign on Third, and there is a stop sign on Fourth. So there's a patchwork of stop signs on these streets. And I'm telling you, somebody that's on the street every day, people are blowing right down these streets, whether there's a stop sign on the avenue or not. There's no brake lights going on. I'm telling you, I'm out there on the street watching the cars go by. I'm on the street watching them go all the way down to the school. There's no brake lights going on. What I'm trying to get here is I'm trying to make the streets safe, but also an enjoyable neighborhood atmosphere. It's really hard to have a neighborhood atmosphere when you live on a freeway, you know? I'm really pushing to get four-way stops at all of these corners. I'm, I'm just focusing on Third and Fourth for now. I'm really pushing hard. The police are doing great. They're doing their job. But this patchwork, it's really not accomplishing anything except enabling the people that are driving the streets to just zip right through them, paying no attention. They're, they're not even slowing down.
Did, when you had your meeting, uh, last week, uh, I guess it was last Friday or whatever it was?
A week ago, Friday, I think.
Did you talk about the, having a four-way stop signs in those, in those intersections? I mean, did you bring it up at that meeting?
I can't remember. Do you remember? Did I bring it up? Okay, I was, I was pretty thorough, but you know, I hate to, I hate to take up too much time.
Well, but usually that's what happens. That's the reason why we had that, we started out with this, you know, with this organization that, you know, that, uh, us on there and citizens on there too, to figure out how to make the city more safer.
They're doing a great job.
Well, I'm saying this, what I'm saying is maybe if that next meeting, we need to talk about that, you know, more. And, you know, I don't know, you know, I mean, if it's, if it takes a four-way intersection, you know, stop, stop that thing down, maybe that's what we need to do. I mean, I'm just talking out loud, but we need to go through our committee, you know, for that.
I know, I know. There's some really kind people in our community. I'm out there walking, they'll actually stop the car and let me cross the street. There are, about half of our community is very kind. But there's another half of our community that doesn't care about anything except getting from point A to point B as fast as they can. Um, and frankly, you know, I'm a little surprised at, at the high percentage of people that are just, you know, crazy driving. That's why I'm pushing so hard for four-way stops. Because I watched the stop signs. When the, the decoys were out there, they were stopping completely and you'd see the car rock, you know? But normally, at least they slow down to almost a stop. And that's really what I'm asking for. Because if people are stopping or almost stopping, the speed curve is, is like this. If you've got people zipping down the streets, 30 miles or over, you've got this straight line of, of, of traffic, constant speed, all the way down to that stoplight at, uh, Willard School. So that's why I'm pushing so hard for these four-way stops.
Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Do I approve of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
A motion to approve the consent agenda, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I have no old business. We have new business.
Consider frustrating of an ordinance adopting by reference the 2020 Uniform Public Defense Code.
We have any questions or presentations on this?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Um, I think we talked a little bit about this at the work session, but there, uh, every year, this comes up for, like any other legislation comes up for renewal, changes, whatever. So I recommend that you adopt it. There are three things we talked about, uh, last Friday at the work session. I'll remind you of that there's a, there's a certain section that I'll just call section number one. It has to do with the possession of, uh, criminal use of weapons and possession and criminal carry of weapons. The state has preempted the cities on all of those, so obviously that's gonna be part of the code that's gonna come out. Uh, the second major thing, I think that they looked at was a, uh, violation of public health order, making it a Class C violation. And that just mirrors the state statute. And so the question is whether you want to be involved in that the same way the state is. Uh, and I think there was some positive discussion on that one. The third one was selling or giving or furnishing cigarettes or tobacco products to a minor, section 5.7. And the league included this because, and back in December, the federal government changed the law to, uh, raise the age of selling to 21 years of age. And, uh, that's one that I didn't know if you wanted to have more discussion on. That change in federal law is a change. I mean, it is, the, the merchants are subject to it. Question is whether, and I don't know where we really left that the other day, whether you want to be subject to that, whether you want the city to enforce that. And I guess that one I would leave up to whatever you all decide. Those are the major changes. I mean, those are really the changes that come from last year. And, uh, I would welcome any questions or comment that you would have.
Well, not that I encourage anyone to smoke because I don't, but I don't want to see us follow suit on the 21. I mean, we can do many things and ask many things of our 18-year-olds to go into service and those kinds of things. And, uh, if they choose to buy a pack of cigarettes then, or a cigar or whatever. So I'm not for that.
Has the state, uh, adopted this?
The state has not, but I have a legislative update today as I was in, uh, some training. And, uh, due to COVID, the state really didn't adopt a whole lot of things in the terminal code. So I don't know, I don't know if it was that, that was part of it, or if it just wasn't looked at or what. But, uh, we went down item after item after item, and it went through committee, and everybody liked it. And it might've passed one house and not the other, but at the end, it was no action taken, no action taken, no action taken. So I don't know if this was part of that or if it was not.
My personal feelings is since the state hadn't really done anything, I'd say just leave it like it is until we.
Till they do?
Till, yeah, till we see what happens later on.
I'll agree with you on that, so.
Later on down the road, you know.
I also concur. It doesn't matter if they're 18 or 20.
So if that's, if that's your consensus and you're in favor of.
Kind of like Kenya, I mean, 18, you go to service, you know, you die from cancer. You know, I mean, it's, uh, it's just, they ought to be able to, you know, I mean, I, I don't encourage smoking either, but it's, you know, but still, I have the right.
But I can see why they did 21 though, to make it harder. But then again, they also don't state how they're gonna enforce this.
It's a hard one to enforce. I, I mean, is it Chief Ward? That'd be a hard one to really enforce. The tobacco, I mean, at a state or any level, I mean, any level.
Remember, laws primarily do work with those who are law-abiding, which is 98 somewhat percent of our population. So it prevents people from doing things that if it wasn't against law, they would do.
Yeah.
That's, so there was also an unfortunate, uh, component of it that, uh, that alcohol, tobacco, sometimes do steams and things like that, you know, push for retailers to lease that, uh, more than.
If that's a consensus, then what my, uh, suggestion would be is to, uh, approve the, uh, the code as changed by the league, but then amend that statute back to what it was last year, which would be the same language. It's just you take out age 21 and put in age 18. That'd be my recommendation. That way you have the rest of the code in there, but you have that one back to where it has always been.
We can always change it if the state approves the age, right?
Certainly, and, and, and you do, you know, and maybe even next year or whenever.
Well, I make that motion as stated.
I'll second.
I have a motion.
Say that motion again.
Adopt the 2020 Uniform Public Defense Code.
That's 5 dot 7, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, section 5.7, 5.7.
Except 5.7, we're gonna leave at 18. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A road call?
She's gotta help you out.
We're all in favor, go ahead.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Neiman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Yes.
I couldn't have said it any better, so I was.
I agree.
All that, all that legal stuff.
Well, you know what's funny about this, because Leslie and I were talking before this. And I said, you know, we really need to figure out a way to spell out what the actual motion is gonna be on that. So I guess we did.
You did a good job, sir. Leslie?
Uh, I would consider resolution authorizing the neighborhood revitalization district rebate for a blighted area within the city so that it is financially feasible to afford to build affordable housing within Compass Point Edition.
Mayor and Commissioner, we talked about this, a pretty good conversation on Friday. Basically, the Compass Point developers have requested that we change the rebate for that development to be 90% for 10 years. We also talked about changing the cap. It's actually in the resolution. Um, it still says 150, but if you would want to change that, that is just.
Well, I like.
No objection.
I like the 200,000.
250,000, I think it's reasonable. Yeah, that still gets you most houses that will be built up there in Compass Point, but you need to get it high enough so you can draw some interest, you know? That's my feeling.
I go with good quality.
Is, is there still a, uh, requirement that 40% has to be low income?
Yeah, 'cause it's still subject to the grant that was received.
So is that low-income able to buy a house, or is it low-income housing that is built?
It's moderate, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, it's moderate.
Yeah, it's not low-income.
It's a moderate income. But yes, they, I, I don't know exactly how that works, Randy.
Isn't it financially the base on loans?
Yeah, so that modern income is gonna, if I recall, it's gonna be a house that's gonna be in about the 160, 170,000. We qualify for that. The income that would, um, to be able to afford that, so.
Is moderate income?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it should catch like new teachers and, and, uh, like police officer, you know, entry-level police officers. Those kind of, those kind of income levels would be, you know.
That, uh, that won't affect anything with them, the developers?
This cap, no, I don't see how this would.
I mean, what, doing, building a moderate-income house, that won't affect, affect them?
Not, not changing this cap, but that's a term.
Okay.
Well, I think the terms of it, you know, 10 years, 90%, and then up to 250,000 is gonna draw a lot of attention to maybe a lot of developers, you know? That the Ark City is serious about getting something done, getting housing done. Also, uh, the, the spitals out there, you know, we already got half of it paid for. And if we're, we're not gonna turn anything for a spatial on top of that, that's really gonna help. I think we're, you know, at least jumpstart that thing.
That's, uh, what I was gonna say. It's a jump, let's go. Any other conversation?
No, I just think it's, I mean, I just think it's great to try to get some, getting something going. Like I said Friday, get some, this community a little bit more accessible, there's some housing, it's some development for our citizens. I think this is something, it'll be interesting to see how this, how this works, but I'm, I'm with Jay. I think it's a, a good start, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, we'll see how it works, but we, you know, we, we've been chasing our tail for four years. We haven't done anything, you know? I mean, it was, and, and I think this is gonna be a jumpstart here, well, you know, and, uh, we may have to make some tweaks down the road, whatever, you know? But I think it's a start of getting some developers.
I think it's a great start.
I'll make a motion, we consider the resolution authorizing a neighborhood revitalization district rebate for a blinded area within the city of Arkans City so that it's financially feasible to build affordable housing within the Compass Point Edition.
I second it. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
We'll get that amount changed on the final resolution.
Thank you.
And then, uh, Randy, you'll send notices out to all these developers and stuff, what we're doing on the Compass Point now, or?
Well, we will at some point, but there's some other steps that need to be taken.
Okay, okay.
We're gonna do publication.
Oh, that's right, I'm sure.
But, yeah, we will definitely.
I'm getting ahead of myself.
Let's get it done. Josh, go ahead. Leslie?
Consider a resolution approving the notice of public hearing for publication and setting the date for a public hearing at 5:30 PM, Tuesday, November 3rd, in the commission room at City Hall, uh, to consider revisions to the city's 2021 neighborhood revitalization plan.
Public hearing is just part of the process in order, that we have to go through in order to adopt the plan.
I'll move that we approve the resolution approving the notice of public hearing for publication and setting the date for a public hearing at 5:30 PM, Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve the notice of public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Josh, I got a question for you on that. Uh, just a quick question. Uh, Jim Seibert wrote up tonight, uh, on the, you know, these, our revitalizations for the city's been five years at a time. Has that been right? Every five years?
Actually, not necessarily. What, what that was, this is just a time to relook at the plan. That's all that's happened. If we want to make that a longer period like he was suggesting.
Well, what I'm saying is if we go a 10-year for housing 90%, maybe we go to 10 years for the revitalization where it's all the same, you know? That way, you know, developers won't get, you know, well, after five years, what are you gonna do, you know, you, you know, type thing.
The way that works though is once you're in, you're in. So even if you got in the last two.
Okay, okay.
It, it, that, we can change that, that's not a problem, but it doesn't affect whether or not you get the rebate.
Okay.
Thank you. Number four.
Consider frustrating of an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into an interlocal agreement concerning the membership and the regional economic area partnership of local government in South Central Kansas.
So, um, we had a pretty good discussion in the work session, so I didn't know if you had any other questions or concerns, but.
Did they come up with the final cost?
Yeah, uh, it would be 48, $4,890 per year.
I think it's a, a great thing to try to get back into. I know there were some issues in the past, but I mean, it, it works with the rails. I know one of the big things in here was the, the rail, yeah, freight rail service, including passenger rail through Kansas. I know that's been a big part of this community for 10-plus years, I think, trying to get that to happen. So, I mean, that's huge to have some support from a regional level. I think there's some other things in here. Address mental health within South Central Kansas, that's another thing we've worked on. I know we got a police officer hired through a grant program with that. I mean, there's a lot of neat things that this can help us with. And sometimes you need a unified voice, voice more than just within your county. And I think this is one of those things that can maybe help us get some of those things, so, uh, I, yeah.
And it gives our, our community a seat at the table when these regional issues are being, being tried, you know, worked off, worked up through and talked about.
Well, I know when I first got elected, we were in that thing, and then we dropped it. And I, I, after thinking about it, after being on Friday, the one reason why I guess we dropped it, uh, whether it was good or bad or different, but, you know, it was the fight over the water deal, and that's, you know, this looked like Wichita and all the big cities was, you know, taking advantage of the little towns and stuff and, and. this look like Wichita and all the big cities was, you know, taking advantage of the little towns and stuff, and and therefore, why should we be paying so much money because we're not getting our, you know, two cents worth, you know? But I think things has changed now, it's, that what it was back in two thousand eight, so.
Might help us get some new business into town or something.
And and you've been, Randy's been associated with it, you know, to, where he's at and stuff, and
Yeah.
he let the growth, and it's what he's done, you know, and
And having Randy being a, our city manager being a part of it before, I mean, with mound ridge, I think that helps. I mean, he's well-respected and light, I think his voice will be heard, I mean, along with any of ours that join in. So I, that's kind of what I got out of that too, so.
But see, like I'm saying is, we participated back two thousand eight, but we weren't on any boards, we didn't get involved. We just showed up to meetings, and I think that's a big difference right there, where you were involved, you were on the committees and stuff, where one of us will have to be with you, probably go to the meetings and stuff, but that's a whole different type of ballgame, you know, where you get, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of value in this.
That's, that's a great idea.
So do I have action?
I make a motion, we consider approving the notice of the, oh, no, that's not it. Sorry. I make a motion, we enter to, authorize the city of Arcane City to enter into an interlocal agreement concerning a membership of the Regional Economic Area Partnership of Local Government in South Central Kansas, R E A P, read.
I'll second.
We need to put the amount.
Is it same amount or we hear?
I suppose it could change, that was, that's the particular
I think it goes off city, your 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 population over ten thousand and then points, was it sixteen cents?
Probably the only thing that'll change.
I think it's three thousand and then sixteen cents per person or, yeah, so.
Okay, well, I don't think it really matters right now then, because it's under
Hopefully, we get a bargain this year with the population, maybe they're
I have a motion in a second, did you get that, Leslie? Okay. Is this voice vote, yes, all those in favor say aye?
No, but real call.
Real call.
Mr. Eastman?
Yes.
Mr. Gager?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Yes, that's five and O, thank you very much.
Arbor Day?
You got lots of trees there.
Hey, I thought the Arbor Day was in April.
The trees were sick.
Yeah.
City manager?
Yes, so, in your packet, there is a calendar, some things coming up. There is a Make-up Arbor Day coming up on October twenty-second at four P M at Randy Park. And so, you're all invited to be there for a tree planting and get your picture taken with a tree and
What date is that?
October twenty-second at four o'clock, that's a thirty P M.
Two days from now.
Two days from now.
Yep, and then, don't forget, the first time ever in ma- in-person advance voting is starting here in Arcane City, so Monday, October twenty-sixth, from nine A M to five P M. And then, from seven thirty A M to five P M on October twenty-seventh through the thirtieth at the water treatment plant, so.
Who was it, on what was it, Tuesday, what was the date, times?
Mondays nine to five, and then the rest of the week, seven thirty to five.
Okay.
And then we'll have another study session on Friday, October thirtieth, at noon. Ricky Hayes will be here with the retail attractions to talk about, build his company and what they named for us.
Have you, have you done any business with him or anybody, or anybody's, the city manager's done business with him?
No, I I have reached out and talked to some city managers that that have, and and I've got some, some reports back from them that were positive, so.
Okay, good.
Who's that again?
His name's Ricky Hayes with Retail Attractions.
Oh, Retail Attractions, okay.
Then reminder, trick-or-treat event downtown on Saturday, October thirty-first, from six to nine. And I think there's some other activities around the community as well, like in the park, there's another one. So there's several things going on. And then, of course, Election Day. And also, Tom Linger has, gave us some guidelines and I can
Will that be on our news, on our website, for any people to look at it on this, my topic?
Put it on there.
It is?
I can put it on there.
Okay, yeah.
Give it to the chamber too.
Okay, probably would hurt to have it on there just to, you know.
Give it to the newspaper?
I did.
Okay.
And then, Tuesday, November third, from seven A M to seven P M is the actual election day for the, for the general election, so that would be across the street or the Super Christian Church. Now, I know you, you all probably looked at the financial summary in your packet. We're kind of watching the sanitation of water, so probably, you're probably seeing some adjustments brought to you in the, in November to do some adjustments on those two funds, but everything else
What do you, what do you mean by adjustments?
Well, there there's, there's cash, the the budget authority in each of them's getting low. We might not have a budget authority before the end of the year.
Okay.
So, but there there's cash, it's not a cash issue, it's just budget authority issue, so.
Just put money where it needs to be put.
Yeah, so, anyway, we'll kind of monitor that, but then you may, that may be something that you'll see here in November. And then, the budget books are finished, and each of you have a copy on your table or some, I'll be some
Make for some
Have midnight reading.
Get midnight reading, yes. And then, there, and Rod, you want to address the fire hydrants and cordyne residuals that have been going on?
Yes. Mayor, city commissioners, people would notice we're doing a little extra flushing. We've actually, what we're doing, we're trying to draw fresh water and bring the residual up around the outside of the city. There's a, we have one up on the North Hospital lot, one up on North Edgemont, Edgemont, corner of Fifteenth and Radio Lane, and Country Club Estates, you know, it's clear out there about itself. East Ridge and Centennial. Emmen Tyler, Jay and Pearson, Summit and Lincoln. What a lot of people don't realize is October is actually our worst month. Because what's happened is the water is still warm from summer, but the water use is going down. You know, creeks don't use a lot of water, but that water leaves the plant, goes straight up there. So it doesn't really help to outline areas. And in the past, we've had some of the oh, one or two of the water distribution staff dedicated to watching these areas. And we're kind of behind now, and it's October, so you're seeing a lot of extra flush. If we get the program going, keep it going, and then these are checked, residual's dropping a little. Then we, then we flush some, get it back up, and then it'll be sporadic. And we'll be quite so noticeable to, to all the people around town. That's pretty well what's going on, are there any questions?
Nope, I get the phone calls and then I call you. Oh, there's a fire hydrant.
So, you say you're a little behind, are we getting caught up in the next, oh, throughout, you think we'll get caught up in the next couple of weeks, so?
So I was going to say, it's a duration.
So, just if we have any questions, I'd say we should get, thank you.
Then, then, see what they're doing, they have a sheet. And they go around, they open one, or each one in the morning, get a chlorine residual, check it at the end of the day. If it's still low, that's when people will notice they're running all night, because then we're, we keep them going. And then we also have, one that's been a trouble spot, and that's Circle Drive and Eighth Street. We've even replaced the water line around Circle Drive, and it's still, still just kind of a trouble spot.
What do you think, what's the reason with that, are you, or do you know?
I'm not sure, and might have to, enough have persist. Might decide to do what's called a burnout next summer. Which nobody likes, it's strong free chlorine, chlorine through the whole system. And you get that free chlorine smell and taste, and it's not the good water to put out before it's a diner or a microwave. But I'm hoping that this program will catch up and will keep us going and going from there.
Well, I appreciate it, Rod.
Thank you, Rod.
Seems to be that you know what you're doing.
Yeah, Rod, I got a question, are there any hydrants that are leaking constantly?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
We have, we have a list of some that's broke.
I know you have that constantly, so, okay.
Yeah, and another part of this is going around, checking down, like there's some that are broke shut. Which will impede the way the water goes and cause some of those problems. Yeah, we got, just like the water lines are all old, all the ground, a lot of the fire hydrant is trying to
Just takes time to get to them and fix them.
Yeah, we just
Yep, okay.
Just as we get them on the list, we hope, are we trying to get it scheduled to work on. Hydrants are actually a little easier to valve, and then hydrants, if they have a valve before the hydrant, then you don't have to lead to the, to the fire hydrant itself, there's a valve. They're a lot easier to fix, but there's a whole lot of those old ones that are no valve. And we're trying to isolate it and, and sometimes we have to do what's called a water stop to isolate the hydrant so we can change it, so there's always challenges.
Yeah. Didn't do much for many years, did they? We didn't do much on the hydrants and line, did we?
Yeah, we, we just have to keep that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
Anything else?
That's it.
Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
I have a motion to adjourn in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.